Adopt this, increasing local control over the annual budget. He said that, I guess, a mayor has some point.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, February 7th, I'm sorry, meeting of the Chickahawney School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. Is anyone in the audience recording or taping this meeting? You're recording the meeting, sir? Recording? Okay. Seeing none. Are any of our school committee members joining us remotely? It looks like we're all here, right? Dave Barcello, is Dave joining us? I don't have my glasses on.
I was told he was on second.
Okay, it's my understanding that Dave has called and he's been excused himself from the meeting this evening. At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, could we please have a roll call for board attendants?
Mayor View?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Barcello? Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Mrs. Parrett?
Present.
Mrs. Scofield?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Lamath?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Lopes?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven present, one absent.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members. So I'll start with the vice chair to my left.
Yes, I went to the CTE pathways for, or CTE for freshmen and the pathways for freshmen at Chickahawney High and Chickahawney Comp. I'd like to thank Lori Parsick and the principal, Mr. Lemke, the principal Lamath at Comp, and Carl Ingram, and Bob Canton. They did an outstanding job explaining it to all the parents.
Thank you. Sunny?
I would just like to say, rest in peace Toby Keith. Outstanding musician, a deep loss to the country music fans.
Thank you. And Grace?
I'll sit.
And Susan?
Thank you to our superintendent from Sharon Lapointe and I. We're grateful for the time you're going to give us this upcoming Monday afternoon. We can discuss the importance of working metal detectors in the four schools, the two high schools, the two middle schools. So again, we're grateful for the time that you're going to give us to discuss this really important matter. And I also wanted to say that I look forward to hearing from our assistant superintendent later this evening about our new program of studies or the additional classes that we're going to be adding. I spoke with Mrs. Bellville before the meeting and I'm really excited about that part of the meeting tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. And Che.
I'm also, thank you.
And Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to give a shout out to all our school counselors, National Counselor Week, and I'd like to just thank them all for what they do for each and every one of our students. Your work doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sandra?
Well, this is February and we have a few items to recognize. It's National Career and Tech Education Month. It's also National Black History Month. It's National Cancer Prevention Month, and National American Heart Association Month. And it's also, we received a memo today that Stryber School is having an art show on March 7th, which is a Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., so that's a wonderful thing to attend. And also, yesterday at the city council meeting, the, at the mayor's order, the counselors voted on this mayor's order that it be it ordered that the city council recommend five members to the school department maintenance warehouse building commission who are members of the community and have appropriate qualifications or experience to serve on the building commission. And also, there was an ordinance, chapter change regarding commissions that if there is a dollar amount associated with something more than, I guess, $5 million or more, that there should be a building commission that's appointed by the city. And also, the engineering department, at the request of city counselors Wagner and Ariaga, the engineering department is going to study the possibility of a traffic light at the entrance of Bellamy School on Pendleton Avenue to assist with the safety for our children. And also, at the request of our city counselor, Mr. Wagner, there was, it was ordered that the city council and the city of Chickahawney adopt Chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987, Article Act, Increasing Local Control Over the Annual School Budget. And if I got my notes correctly from Mr. Wagner, apparently at one point in time, there was a mayor in the state who, I guess, decreased the school budget, and this act allows reappropriation of money to a school budget. And also, the, it came before the city council that the Rules Committee consider increasing the allotted time for public input from three minutes to five minutes, and this is going into a subcommittee for discussion. So I'm assuming that if that is for the city council, that would also be for any other city meeting, including the school committee. Thank you.
Deanna?
Yep. Being that it's February, our next meeting, I think, is in the midst of February vacation or winter break, so just want to wish all teachers and students who actually get that restful break and hopefully rejuvenate you for the rest of the year. Outside of that, I also did want to pass condolences along for Board One, Boardman Citizen, Jack Valley. He did actually, used to work for City Hall as well, but he was a neighbor and he loved to watch the sunsets over Bellamy, so we were very lucky to have him as a neighbor and thankful for our time with him. And definitely just want to pass condolences on to their family and friends as well. Outside of that, that's all I have.
Thank you. And Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick second to just address the adults, I guess, I would say, of the city. I had a webinar yesterday and I arrived home early for my webinar after school. I was quite upset. Outside my window, I heard screaming and yelling, and looked out my window and saw, you know, I don't know all the details, but what I can say, what very clearly appeared to be two adults who were yelling, swearing, cursing at, and physically walking towards what I believe to be a student on the sidewalk in front of my yard. You know, and it's very upsetting to see this behavior coming from adults towards children. And, you know, understanding, obviously, children aren't perfect, but as adults, we're the role models, we should be the people to look up to, and I couldn't help but just look out my window at the three, four, five students that were with these adults who were watching this behavior happen. And so, as an adult, just understand that you are constantly a role model for not just your children, but the children of our city. And, you know, we sit on this board and as adults, you know, we want what's best for our children and what's best for our city, and none of that will come with petty childish behavior. And, you know, again, I'll stop short of, you know, being insulting because I don't know the, all the details, but in no circumstance should an adult be swearing and going towards a student. If there's an issue, address it with the school board, address it with the school. There's ways to deal with this other than adults going at children. Thank you.
And Ron?
I'll sit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And superintendent, public announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say good evening to everyone, and I want to echo the sentiments about appreciating our counselors for National School Counselor Appreciation Week. I know they had a get-together that was orchestrated by Ms. Abby Tenzar, so I just want to give a shout out to our counselors who work hard in our schools every day.
Thank you, superintendent. Public input. Speakers shall identify themselves by providing their name and address, and there will be a 30-minute limit to the period of public input. Three minutes are allowed for individual speakers. Speakers are chosen first come, first served. Topics for discussion should be limited to those within the school committee's scope of authority. Comments and complaints regarding school personnel or students are generally prohibited unless these comments and complaints concern matters within the scope of the school committee authority. We have one person signed up for public input. I have Al Kendall, Chair of the Commission on Disability. Welcome, Al. Welcome to the school committee room.
Thank you very much. I'm Al Kendall. I don't even know where I live. Forty Meadow Street in Chickahawney. I'm on a combination of exhilaration and overwhelming opportunity. I want to congratulate the members of the new school committee. Friends of mine have told me, we stand on the backs of giants. And I've known city counselors forever, probably since the founding of Chickahawney and school committee members as well. As the mayor reminded me, I moved out of, moved out of his district three into seven. I started in four and I moved to five, where I started trouble as a member of a political committee. From there on, it's been an exciting experience. And you folks stand on the shoulders of giants because you have inherited one of the best, most refined, most maintained, most beneficial schools, programs, and I have known several superintendents. And I am going to make your, I'm going to make your Dr. Ware a very interesting life in the next few years as I continue my term. I've got two years, doctor, left. When I met Dr. Ware, and I met also Dr. Harry Dumay and his wife at the inauguration, I had one of the most wonderful experiences and conversations in my life. Because I met people who were excited about what they were doing and what they have done. And not making any big shakes of it. It's not because they're doing the job because of who I am and hooray for me and everything. I found out that Dr. Dumay's wife worked with peoples with disabilities, persons with disabilities for years. Isn't that a wonderful experience? Now I know how to get to Dr. Dumay. But I didn't have to get to Dr. Dumay except by saying one thing that got him excited. I said, "I want to establish and I have help already to set up," because my educational background, my teaching background, to set up a certificate course for ADA, which is important as not only a human, human rights benefit that started in 1990 with President Reagan signing the Americans with Disabilities Act. And it took thousands of years for the United States to do it. And 120 or 130 other countries in the world are replicating what we have done, but they aren't doing nothing near because look at what they're doing, killing each other. We're doing the same thing probably, but what I'm trying to express to you, and I hope, I don't want to take a lot of your time, I'm going to go over my three minutes and I hope you'll forgive me, because some of the things that I have to tell you and I want to enjoin you to do and to cooperate and to help and to suggest is exceedingly important in this post-COVID time. COVID ruined a lot of things, killed a lot of people, and has changed the atmosphere into an acid rain, where we walk into a store and we're treated with rudeness, where we have people coming and complaining and talking about what you don't do, what politicians don't do, what leaders don't do. But they won't follow through with a suggestion, an educated guess, even a question. Would this work if we do this? Making things possible, not impossible? That's post-COVID. The Commission on Disability has been preserved in Chickahawney, has saved Chickahawney thousands, if not millions, of dollars because we have kept our pledge to service everyone who has a complaint. We've responded to every complaint. We've assured people of every opportunity that they have, and if they want to take advantage of it, they have the opportunity. And we're going to make that opportunity available within a very short time. Our first meeting, which will be a celebration, which will be an appreciation, and which will be a very full business docket, will be on the fourth Monday of February this month, and everyone is invited. I hope we have crowds standing outside of City Hall. That's how important that meeting is because we have to do something to create a positive attitude and change the we can't do, that we don't know how, we don't know what, or use our voices without any action and without keeping our promises to our thanking our predecessors and to providing for a good future. That's what education is all about. Now, my suggestion for education is one thing. I talked to Dr. Ware, and Dr. Dumay was excited about being able to put together a certificate program for ADA at Elms. Also, what I suggested to Dr. Ware is that we provide three units. One for grades one to six, grades seven and eight, and high school. What I would like to do is ask the people of Chickahawney to provide me with some real resources. I need three more people to become commissioners on the Commission on Disability. The state requires an elected official to be on the commission. We have nine members. We have a spot. We have an opportunity. We would like someone from the school committee to not only be the resource and the liaison, but to serve as a full commissioner on the Commission on Disability. I need three secretaries because there's a lot of administrative work, and I've been taking the crunch of it for the last five, six years, and I really need the help of some people who are willing to spend some time and help us. I need two clerks to act as secretaries for our meetings because we have, we want to make the city clerk very happy and provide accurate minutes. And if a commissioner is involved in maintaining the secretary's notes, we have found that that does not work very well. So we need a little help at staff. We need students as interns. We need senior volunteers, and I'm working on that and I have access to help. As well, we now have a senior HR person who is the ADA compliance officer. He is the connection between the state and the federal mandate to provide service. I assist him. My commission assists him. And by golly, between the two of us, we're going to make Chickahawney so proud. I will be very happy when the governor comes out and says, "You did a great job." Because that will happen. Just in concluding, we are going to work with the school TV. We are going to work with other commissions, and we are going to work on a regional basis that will help them and us. I appreciate your help. I appreciate your support. I supremely value your friendship. And Dr. Ware, we're going to be related. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Visitors, we have none scheduled. We'll move on to approval of minutes, 24-2-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on January 17th, 2024, be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we have a full body in present. We can take a hand vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Reports 24-2-2.
Report on personnel action taken. I'd like to call Deb Green to this podium.
Good evening, everyone. For your last hiring period, your total new hires were 22. We had six resignations in that period of time. Three Unit A members were hired, four Unit E members were hired. There were no retirements. Since then, we have made our full transition to power school with our orientation and our postings. We have 67 open postings. 24 of those are Unit A, 16 of those are Unit E, and 21 of those positions are special education. Many of these are long-term substitute positions or temporary positions to cover leaves of absences. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report on personnel action taken? Sandra?
Just, we have many conferences coming up in the month. It's exciting to see there's about 17 individuals participating in various programs like providing multilingual learners with equitable access to grade-level science and math, the Mass Legal Webinar Session, de-escalation and intervention training. These are some of the titles of the programs. DESI History Social Science Leaders Networking Meeting, and a School Health Education Conference, Interpreter and Translator in Education Workshop Series, Interrupting Racism: Powerful Strategies for Strengthening Your SPED Program, as well as School Nutrition Association Conference Participation, and a Summer Eats Conference. So it's a lot of exciting benefits to our students.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Susan?
Could I ask Debbie to please answer a question for me? I'm wondering how the overall atmosphere is in our buildings. Is, do we have the bare minimum of employees in place to take care of the needs of our students? Are we putting too much pressure on the employees that are in place and they're doing the job that we're asking of them? Are they doing the job of one and a half people, of two people? Are things going okay for the most part? Because I see a lot of, I saw the resignations of people just staying for a month, five months, you know, a year or so, and you know what I'm asking of you. Please, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think it depends on the situation. I think maybe in some situations and programs, we may have someone doing the work of one and a half people because they're down a paraprofessional, and we're constantly posting for those. We have a number of leaves coming up, you know, otherwise, and so we're trying to cover those positions, so that's going to put additional stress on. But I think we're mostly there. We only have 67 openings. We're in the past, I've seen 70, 80, 90 openings, and we're at 67. And a lot of those are, some of those are kitchen staff, non-union employees, safety and security monitors, building subs, and things like that. There are, you know, like I said, 26 Unit A openings, and some of those are SLPs and SLPA's and special education teachers. So while I know it's stressful, I do think we're close. Does that answer? Do you have any more questions, I guess?
I'm hoping our staff is much more content than they were, say, six months ago, or even as early as four months ago. Now that they have a better understanding of their healthcare benefits. We did ask you to do that as a committee, is to make sure that our staff, our entire staff knew that as a city, we were taking as best care of them as we can, because I believe, if I can just, if you can clarify me, we pay 75% of our staff's health insurance benefits.
I believe it's 60.
Point of information, a single plan is 60%, I'm sorry, 70% and a family plan is at 60%.
Yeah, yeah, it's as high as 70. Because I remember being really proud of our city that we would pay our employees so well, and I believe they thought that we were paying them less, so I want to make sure that, that, we talked about that, I know, in the past.
Right, so the insurance breakdown is just that. I think because the language in some of the contracts says, "We'll pay..." I think because the language in some of the contracts says, "We'll pay at least 50%," it doesn't say what the actual percentage is. So I think that's where maybe some of the misunderstanding may come from.
And we have three types of health insurance. We offer people, we also offer dental, and I believe we pay up to 80% on dental insurance. And then we gave our staff raises within a very short period of time, not long ago, in other words.
And we also have a strong EAP program, Employee Assistance Program.
We do.
That, you know, employees can take advantage of if they choose to. That I keep in touch with them monthly with newsletters and things like that, and sending those out, and making sure people are aware of the things that are, our staff is aware of the opportunities that are available to them through those webinars, be it Health New England or the EAP program. I keep those, that information keeps going out.
We get all your emails, and it's beneficial for us to read them and have a real clear understanding and an appreciation for how hard you're working in our city to make sure that you keep all our employees as happy as possible and keep them on as long as you can, because we need them.
We're trying.
Yeah, well, you're doing more than trying. You're doing your job, and you're doing it well, so thank you. Thanks for answering my questions.
Was that any further discussion on personnel action taken? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Twenty-four dash two dash three.
Move that the bills warrant S-011924 totaling $855,548.92 be approved.
Sunny, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, and I'll have Jay Douth please read the warrants into the official record.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we'll be voting on three warrants. I will read the totals of the three warrants combined into the record, and then we will vote on them individually. For athletics, $25,999. Food services, $200,677. General expenses, $245,882. Grants, $532,662. Maintenance, $335,058. Utilities, $261,970. Special education, $336,808. Student activities, $4,649. Transportation, $867,550. Telecommunications, $6,842. Sales tax, $572, for a grand total of all three warrants of $2,818,676.
So like School Committee member Jason Douth has just said, we'll be voting on three individuals. The first warrant is the S-011924 for $855,548.92. Any discussion on the first warrant? We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash four.
Move that the bills warrant S-012624 totaling $916,745.62 be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the second warrant. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash five.
Move that the bills warrant S-020224 totaling $1,046,381.50 be approved.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Susan.
Thank you. On at least one of these three warrants tonight, I just wanted to point out a couple of, or a few of the expenditures that we've taken care of in our schools this week. We spent $7,360 on temporary nursing personnel, $23,356 on Parents Square, which Superintendent, we were fortunate enough as a committee to receive an email on and the success of it. So I'm glad to see that we've gotten ample participation by our parents and our families, and it was a good expense of monies by our school department to expend almost $24,000 in the hopes of getting our families involved. So thank you for all the efforts that everybody's making, especially our principals and all our teachers. Oak Security Group and Citizen Security, I see Mr. Chapdeline in our audience tonight, Three Way Communication. We spent some money on radio equipment and parts, and camera repairs and parts, and locksets and keys and security accessories. $8,323.50 on apparel for DuPont. It's a reward program that we're having. I'm sure it's, sometimes when I'm around town, I see students and staff wearing the T-shirts that signify that they're from a certain school in Chicopee or a certain athletic group, and it's really nice to see. New radios, $7,301 and $9,449. Three warrants having to do with camera repairs and parts. Window panels for our air conditioning products are up and coming from LaZot Glass, which I believe is a Chicopee company, $4,494. And then lastly, in our last set of warrants, there was eight warrants for snow plowing and salting to Noraki Construction, which is a Chicopee company. I like that we keep our tax dollars in the city of Chicopee, and they did a lot of hard work for us, getting our schools ready for opening at $48,078.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sarah will take a roll call.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Abstain.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Abstain.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Nine yes, two abstained.
Motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash six.
Move that the 2024 summer meeting schedule be approved.
Chuck, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion on the 2024 summer meeting schedule? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash seven.
Move that the 2024-2025 regular meeting schedule be approved.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Yep, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve for the 2024-2025 regular meeting schedule. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash eight.
Move that the following requests to use school facilities be approved in accordance with the Community Use of School Facilities policy. A, Holy Oak Chicopee Family and Community Program Head Start to use Zatella School February 2024 through April 2024. And B, Massachusetts Association of School Committees to use Chicopee Comprehensive High School on March 9th, 2024.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Any discussion? Sandra?
Just for the viewing public, the Head Start program is a request to use Zatella School gym, and the program is Dads and Kids called Learn in Motion, and the program promotes family engagement, helps children get active, socialize, and practice important life skills such as listening, following directions, teamwork, and overcoming challenges, and it is offered at no cost to families. And then the second program offered by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees that's requesting to use Chicopee Comprehensive High School is actually an education program that's required for newly-elected school committee members.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash nine.
Move that the programs of studies for the following schools be approved. A, Chicopee Academy. B, Chicopee Comprehensive High School. And C, Chicopee High School.
Gianna, can I get a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the programs of studies.
Motion is to approve the program of studies. Any discussion? Grace?
I just have a couple of comments as I was going through the lengthy courses of study, and I just was excited to see some science courses, Unified Science, Forensics, Bio Science, Physical Science, English IV, Discovering Yourself. How do we define ourselves? How does the world around us contribute to our sense of self? And that was through, I thought, a very, very interesting way for an 18th to 19th century British world literature course. I thought these new courses being added were enticing to engage students, so I was very, very excited to see that. Becoming an educator, with the shortage that we're facing, you know, countrywide, I thought that that was really exciting, that we were starting here in Chicopee, becoming an educator. I was wondering, Dr. Ware, if you could just comment on that briefly?
Excuse me. Absolutely. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to Ms. Jen Belleville, who actually led the charge with the committees, that actually did this hard work. I just want to give credit where credit's due. She and her team actually led the charge on this, so if I could turn it over to her, I'd like to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Ware. Before I answer you, Ms. Schofield, I do want to actually send a shout-out to the teams that have worked on this. This year, we spend hours meeting and really discussing our program of studies for a true alignment. Our three principals, Lori Valencourt, Andrew Lamoth, Dave Lemke, were critical in that, as well as Lori Parsdick for our pathway programs, Carl Ingram for CTE, Cara Blanchard, our Director of Career and Workforce Development, our two head guidance counselors, Diane Vecarelli and Robin Vinault, all of our guidance counselors, as well as our content specialists, Juliet Burke, Tim Sweeney, Steve Brown, and Danny Hill, as well as Sean Macken played a part in it. And from my office, Christina Pina, who is the Data Instructional Specialist, was a true rock star. So I just want to give credit where credit was due, just in the sense that this was truly a team effort. We really spent a lot of time looking at the alignment of all three of our high schools, as well as the expansion of our pathways programs and the opportunities that we're providing students, especially at Academy. Ms. Valencourt and her team did an outstanding job in looking at ways that we can provide partial credit, as well as provide more diverse courses to fit the needs of the students that are served at Academy. But we had a lot of conversations around the pathways. The educator, originally, it was becoming a teacher, and we realized that was not what we really wanted to encompass, because there's so much more than just a teacher, that it's really about becoming an educator. We're expanding for our ROTC as far as leadership opportunities, but really, every pathway, we are increasing our course offerings and the opportunities for our students across the board. We're offering AP Psychology as a new course at Chicopee Comp and Chicopee High. Chicopee Comp's taking a little risk with their pop culture for science, but we had a staff member who was really excited about it and said that they would pilot it for this coming year, and if it's a true success, that we would then bring it over to High. But the discussion around alignment and opportunities was rich, it was engaging, and I'm really excited for this program of studies.
I shout-out to the crowd then, because I was reading these courses, and I was like, "Oh, I'd love to audit some of these." And I did have in my notes some of the junior ROTC. I thought that was great. The other thing I was intrigued to see was the integrate video course that was being offered, and I just was curious as to what role Chicopee TV would play in that, or is that separate from Chicopee TV?
So it's with Mr. Dom at the high school as part of the Pathways program in the studio.
Excellent. Thank you. Give kudos to the whole group. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments?
I, kind of a question, but also kudos as well. I mean, it seems like great growth in programs. Really excited to see pathways growing, and as well as AP courses and electives that it seems that students are interested in. But I just had a question on the science of pop culture. When it reads that it's being trialed and it'll run opposite of Biology MCAS review, is this, like, you can take one or the other? What is that? I'm just trying to understand what that means.
So that is, the MCAS review is a semester course, and so the other semester, the pop culture elective, would run opposite that, so a student would have one for one semester, and then that for the other semester.
Okay. Thank you.
It's how we would fit it into the schedule.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So we have a motion to approve the programs of studies. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous motion carries. Twenty-four dash two dash ten.
Review pedestrian safety and determine the status of safe routes to school. Assessments topic requested by Ms. Sandra Perret.
I brought this up just as a focus because of the student pedestrian accidents that happened around Bellamy School, and I know that the Massachusetts Department of DOT has a Safe Routes to School program, and I was just wondering what the status was of that, if we did a study of all of our schools and...
Yep, I can definitely speak to that, Ms. Perret. Ms. Shelley Delaquilla, our Director of Transportation, was going to be here this evening, but she had a family obligation, so actually, we have actually asked Ms. Cara Cruiser, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Support, to speak on her behalf this evening to give you an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, yes, Ms. Delaquilla, as Dr. Ware said, has been working with the safe route to schools. So right now, where we're at is, they have been mapping the arrival and dismissal observation on all the schools, looking at, see what the issues are. They are doing walk audits to look at crossing areas and crossing staff. Since our last meeting, they've also sent all the addresses to the safe schools, the Safe Routes to Schools program, and they are taking the addresses, and they are making radius maps of all the schools. So then we'll sit down and talk about the results that they've found, and how we can increase pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, so we're working right in conjunction with them. Also, Shelley wanted me to make sure that I noted that in the spring, the Massachusetts program is working with us to have assemblies at the elementary and middle schools that will address pedestrian safety and bike safety. So we're working very closely with them, and we're very fortunate to have them working with us as well.
I know that in one of the areas that I read, that there was a discussion of the walking school bus as an item of getting children to school safely, and I know that last year, Stefanic School had talked about probably starting that. I don't know if that occurred, or is it still in the process?
It hasn't started yet. I actually met with the principal, who is Ms. Amanda Thariel. So I do, backing up, I meet with the principals once every couple of weeks to actually have a one-on-one with them. That is something that she has brought to my attention about how to start up, but she's not the only one. There are a couple of principals who've been in communication with me about that, that I would be remiss if I didn't actually talk about Stryber, which is Ms. Jen Wilson, and so, and also Belcher, Mr. Sam Carlin. So we're actually going to have a bigger conversation about that. I actually relayed to the principals in my previous district in which I was at, we actually did have the walking school bus for a lot of our neighborhood schools, because we actually do not, sometimes we don't pay attention to the fact that the walking school bus is a method of transportation for families who are not mobile or are unable to actually make sure that their child has a safe way or be with a responsible adult to actually get to the school. So we are actually having a large conversation about how to expand that to the schools that are truly neighborhood schools and have a large walking population, but they haven't started just as yet.
And how many times do you meet as a group?
The frequency hasn't been determined just yet. I know Ms. Delaquilla actually has been meeting with the director over Safe Schools, I mean, Safe Routes to Schools, so I would say that it probably is to be determined, but it would actually probably come up as frequency, and maybe, I think she told me this week, that there's another meeting coming up in next week or so, where she's actually trying to get the results that Ms. Cruiser was talking about. So from there, I hope to give you another update in a future meeting.
Are the minutes of that meeting, of those meetings, are they available to the public, or...
I'm not sure. I can find out, though. That's a good question. I think some of those meetings have been virtual, so I can actually find out from Ms. Delaquilla.
Okay, thank you. And I know, and it's wonderful, it was great yesterday evening to see the motion by our[1774.59] motion by our city councilors, Mr. Wagner and Ms. Ariaga, to have a study for a traffic light at Bellamy and Pendleton. So it's wonderful to see all of our city elected officials committed to increasing the safety for our children. So, thank you. Thank you for that update.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other discussion? Don?
Yes. This is something that's been bothering me for a while. It's been a nice, warm winter, so it hasn't been a big problem, but people don't shovel their sidewalks anymore. And you go down Chicopee Street where we've had some pedestrian deaths, they're not shoveled. So I was wondering if this team, that's the walking school bus, can impart upon the parents, if their sidewalks aren't shoveled on the way to school, that they say something. You know, see something, say something? Because we really need to start getting this, make sure these sidewalks are shovelled when it snows. I mean, like I said, this winter's been pretty warm. We really haven't had a major issue. It's melted in a day or two. But that's a day or two of kids walking possibly in the street.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll move on to 24-2-11.
Update on the Bowie School Playground, the accessibility of all school playgrounds, and to investigate having the school playground supervised by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Topic requested by Ms. Sandra Parrot.
And again, that was because of a discussion that was brought to our attention by parents at Bowie School. And then, considering the fact that all of our playgrounds are kind of like mini parks, and, you know, with all the responsibilities that Mr. Chaplin has with the school buildings itself, and then the investigation of a new maintenance warehouse building, the Anna Berry School development, it would seem that that's a specialty area, the playgrounds, and that perhaps that should be shifted. And it's probably not something that we can decide here, but maybe should go into a subcommittee for further discussion that would come under the Department of Parks and Rec for the city, because that's their area of expertise, whereas the school committee is education, and Mr. Chaplin is maintenance of buildings. Not to negate all the knowledge that he does have, but, you know, perhaps to consolidate what goes together stays together, parks and mini playgrounds of the school. Just something that I thought we should possibly investigate.
Absolutely. I have Mr. Chaplin here this evening, who can actually provide a little bit of an update on that topic as well.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. To start off, the Bowie School Playground, so as you know, we had ADA complaint there. We did install the matting, and the matting was installed correctly. We did have a slide that was damaged. That slide has been replaced. We had a playground inspection done on all our playgrounds. So we have a list of recommendations that we're working on right now. We actually have a quote now for about $12,000 for recommended repairs at Bowie Playground, which some of the decking, some of the rubber that's on the decking is wearing away. So they're recommending to replace the decking. So we're in the process of possibly moving on to the replacement parts. Everything is safe there now. There was nothing that said that the kids cannot play on the playground. It's just recommendations they made for all our playgrounds. So we're slowly going through the process of getting all the inspections and all the repairs lined up. The accessibility to all school playgrounds, so after we had our meeting, we talked about that we wanted to know about all of our playgrounds. We started the process. We found a company that does, it's a landscape architect that specializes in playground structures. We had a price of $33,500 to do a full ADA inspection in all of our nine playgrounds. I say nine because there is a 10th playground, which is Berry School, which is on Garrity Grove, and that is maintained by the Parks Department. So we do have actually one playground, now that I'm thinking about it, that is maintained by the Parks Department. That's at Garrity Grove. And there's times where the Parks Department has always been good working with us. If we see it needs wood chips, sometimes we buy the wood chips and we spread them. Sometimes they buy the wood chips and we spread them. It depends what's going on and how busy they are. I can say on the ADA accessibility study, so we were scheduled actually to start yesterday, but when the contract, when the contract goes through, we got our price. We, I met with Dr. Ware, we agreed with the price. We agreed we had to get it done. We moved forward. The contract went through all the different offices it has to go to. And then, before it goes to the mayor's office, it goes to the Law Department. The Law Department received the contract and wanted one little language changed. So we had to reach back out to the company. They had to redo the contract, change the one piece of language. Now we're going back through the process to go through all the signatures again. So it'll probably be another week before I get minimum, to get started again on this inspection process. But we are working on that. Last, the playgrounds being supervised by the Parks and Rec Department. You know, I can't speak for the Park and Rec Department. I do know that, you know, normally, my custodians and staff at the school department, we may be down one or two custodians at a time. So I have basically almost all the time a full staff. Parks Department, I can't say that. And the mayor can speak up on that, I'm sure. They're always down eight to 12 people throughout the Parks Department. I can't imagine them taking on nine playgrounds without hiring a crew for them to do that. They already, I think the number of playgrounds and cemeteries they take care of right now is 36. Is that right, Mayor?
I believe there's just about 30. And there's also the cemeteries for a total of 36.
So, I mean, it's not my purview to say whether I should be taking care of them or not. Whatever the school committee and Dr. Ware say Scott takes care of, that's what Scott will take care of. So I'm not worried about it. But I, you know, I really have no say in it. I think, you know, I know, Mr. Streppka, we work a lot, together a lot. I just can't imagine turning that over to them and having them be able to maintain it.
Thank you.
That's just my opinion.
Sandra, you have the floor.
Just, would it be something that we would entertain to consider as, with a further discussion?
I can say that I've already had the discussion. I'll just speak quickly about the conversation I'd had with the superintendent about a month ago, when this was first brought to our attention.
The superintendent of schools?
Superintendent of Parks and Rec. I'm sorry. Let me clarify. Superintendent of Parks and Rec, and Scott is absolutely correct. We are short-staffed. We're trying to find innovative ways, for example, purchase a really unique piece of equipment that allows to plow in sand sidewalks that they're responsible for 11 miles of, to just innovatively, using technology, to really replace the fact that they're short and down, crew members. I can say that we are taking on the responsibility of a 2.3-mile linear park along the Connecticut River. They'll be maintaining that. And also, the post-9/11 K-9 Memorial Park, which is roughly a seven-acre non-traditional park that's located onto the entrance of Westover Air Force Reserve Base. They'll be taking on the duties and responsibilities of maintaining that park, which brings in total the parks and, like Scott said, 30 parks and roughly six cemeteries that are under the purview of Park and Rec. These are discussions we're always welcome to have, open. I know that we do many different things as chargebacks with the school district. The school district is a department of the city of Chicopee, and obviously something that we care tremendously about, especially the well-being of the student population that's using playgrounds and playscapes at our schools. But at this particular time, it's not something that can happen today, but it's certainly something we can keep an open mind to in the near future, and also reevaluate that as, again, we're able to get more employees. Job fairs will be happening very shortly, under the direction of our Chief Human Resource Officer, who's here today. And the goal is to really recruit high-quality employees. And I personally have scheduled a tour of all of our schools, with emphasis in our high schools of talking to some of our seniors, and who may have, be up in the air on what their, what their future is for, I'll say, after graduation, and let them know that the city of Chicopee is one of the best employers in the city, and consideration to openly applying here for hopefully not just a job, but a career with potential to grow. And that's really what I've tasked the Human Resource Department with, creating those opportunities to work your way up the success ladder through every department here in the city of Chicopee. And as for just saying today that we could take over the nine parks, it's just not possible. So...
It was a discussion. So I appreciate all the information that you shared with the scope of responsibility that comes under the Park and Rec Department with regards to the new parks that you listed, the cemetery. So thank you for that information. Probably not all of us were aware of the depth of their responsibilities. So thank you.
And just a point of information, too. Please understand that we're also looking at the city-owned and maintained parks, and looking at them from a comprehensive standpoint now versus the way in the past it used to be done. For example, Zot Park surveys just went out, because we really want to do an upgrade there. We are removing Bemis Pond, but we're also looking at a comprehensive study right now that involves a lot of public input on what they'd like to see in the future of that park. We recently did Rivers Park over, was a rough, I believe it was about a $400,000 project, to create ADA-compliant playscapes, create wonderful passive walking paths, and make the park into something special. So the goal is to continue to upgrade and modernize our parks as they become dated, just like some of the, I call them playscapes, but smaller playgrounds that are on school property that are maintained by the facilities of the school district. So our goal is to look at all of those particular playscapes, make sure that they're safe, and that happens very frequently with inspections, and keeping them up to speed for those who are out there using them every day. So we're going to keep focusing on upgrading our parks. I think that, whether it be passive or all forms of recreation, we want to make sure that we maintain those neighborhood parks that everyone is accustomed to using on a daily basis, especially in the warmer weather.
Thank you. And to increase the accessibility, so that's for all. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about the parks?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Doug was first. Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Scott. I know you had mentioned that we were going to, for that $33,500, look at the nine playgrounds. Are we going to get in touch with the Park and Rec to make sure that Berry doesn't get overlooked, so that we can, I'd hate to have one park that's not ADA-compliant.
So I haven't confirmed my information, but the company I hired, when I talked to them about doing this kind of inspection, they mentioned that through Lee Poliott and the Planning Department, they have done this on the city side for the city playgrounds. I haven't confirmed it myself with Lee or seeing the study myself, but I can check into that.
So the parks are kind of overlooking Berry School Playscape right now?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All set? Deanna?
Yeah, I just had a question on the inspections you were talking about, just two points of clarification. So you had mentioned that they're being done outside of Bowie on all playgrounds. So is the $12,000 in repairs just for Bowie, or...?
Yeah, so the $12,000, I think it's like $12,500, but, so Bowie School Playground was put in around, don't quote me, but 1999. It was one of our first playgrounds that we put in as a maintenance department. And as a community, we all got together. Jim Stefanik actually got us together, and we all volunteered, and we put the playground in. As Mr. Kendall said, you know, a lot of the ADA laws didn't happen until 1990. So putting in a playground in 1999, a lot of the ADA laws didn't really make it over to the playground structures until, you know, 2007, 2008, around there. That's when they started really looking at playgrounds. So part of that $12,500 is actually changing some of the structure there, to put a transition area over, so someone with a wheelchair can get to that transition. If we had this done first, we probably wouldn't have to do all the matting. But a normal playground nowadays has an area, an access to the transition area where someone could get onto the playground itself. And a lot of our playgrounds are not set up that way because of the age of the playgrounds. And, you know, I almost think that, especially with the way ADA laws change, and, you know, they come up with better equipment all the time, I almost think, especially with the age of our playgrounds, we almost have to think of like a 15-year replacement plan. Like, we should not have a playground more than 15 years. And that's just my personal opinion. Of course, the playground would keep going forever, but with, you know, sun deteriorating, all the plastic, the vandalism that happens on the weekends, or, you know, at nights, I think we really should like get on a schedule where all the nine playgrounds get onto a schedule where every few years one gets replaced, and on like a 15-year cycle.
And you were mentioning that that $12,000 included stuff ADA-related for Bowie. So is this inspection separate of the inspection you mentioned by the landscape company for their completely separate inspections? So there potentially could be more?
Correct. There could be more, yes. Yep.
And then, last question, I'm sorry. Then, so outside of Bowie, is there like any, have there been any other results, like from the initial playground inspections that have happened?
So some of the minor stuff, like wood chips in low areas, that wasn't, that weren't raked out, or, you know, a loose bolt or nut, the actual inspector at that point actually tightens that stuff up. But a lot of it is, like I said on the first one, like some of the rubber coated coating on the metals is starting to deteriorate, so we have to look at replacement. So a lot of it is, you know, I should say, we did what we could to make it safe, and they're safe now. But now it's getting into the, what they suggest to be replaced in the future.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Sunny?
Yeah, Scott, you pretty much touched on what I was looking at, the future of the parks, the schools being of the age that they are. Your thoughts on a 15-year to 20-year replacement? Because we seem to be putting Band-Aids on everything, trying to catch up. And if we look at the big picture, we need to put something together, be it a study, a commission, but through your department, because you guys are on top of all of that, and look to the future, and not continually put Band-Aids out there. I think you're on the right track with what you're going at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Lamoth?
Yes. With the $12,000 going into Bowie, I understand why you got to do it. But at what point do you have to look for capital money, as opposed to just bleeding your budget dry?
We, you know...
There are dollar figures, you say, I'm going to do a repair, and it's over a certain dollar figure, and I have to go get capital.
I can tell you that that is a constant conversation we have with the new administration that has come into our district, who haven't heard that there's no rules for capital, and when the city pays, and when the city doesn't pay. So that will come up soon. I'm sure you'll hear more about that in the future.
Well, I know Esther makes it a lot easier right now, but Esther's gone away. So at some point, we're going to have to start saying, "Hey, you know, this playground needs to be replaced, and it's $30,000, and we need capital." Or there's got to be plans for it in the budget somewhere. We can't just keep taking money out of a budget, because that budget can't sustain. And I think Mr. Kendall was raising his hand, but he's not allowed to speak at this point. He's probably saying that if we put somebody from the school committee on his committee, they'd probably be able to help with a lot of this.
So Dr. Ware wanted to address your first question.
Yeah. So, and Mr. Chaplin spoke to it. So a lot of the conversation that myself, Mr. John Myeraki over in Finance, and the administration team, we are identifying exactly what's being discussed up here tonight. And what I am going to say at this point is, you can look forward to a comprehensive report that will include from my findings from my entry plan, as well as things that were not included in my entry plan, but it was on my listening and learn tour. And then I also would like to inform you and actually make my recommendations, but as, of course, you, as the committee, would have to come to have a conversation about how you'd like to move forward. But I definitely agree with you, Mr. Lamoth. There's a lot of costs that have been put off and prolonged for years that have been inherited. And that's not to say that there hasn't been effort on Scott and his department to try to get things done. However, I definitely will say those numbers are adding up quickly. And like you said, with the knowledge of Esther going away, we will most likely have to entertain conversations about what's capital improvement and what's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandra, parrot a second time.
So, as Mr. Chaplin said, that the playground should be on a replacement schedule, so that that would be part of the improvement plan for our Chicopee Public Schools, not only the buildings themselves, but the surrounding land as well. So that's wonderful that you're pulling it all together.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. And I just want to own this, I give Mr. Chaplin and his team a lot of credit, because it's been a lot of people, hours in conversation about how to wrap our heads around this, so we can come together and talk about how to move forward with a plan.
Right. I agree. It's all good minds coming together.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Don, second time.
I'd like to make a motion to put the playgrounds into the Facility Subcommittee for further discussion on what the costs, the costs are going to be, so that they can give us a list that could go... that could go forward to finance afterwards.
So we have a motion to put the playgrounds into Subcommittee.
Second motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Facilities Director Scott Chapdeline for the update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that concludes our regular order of business, and Vice Chair Don Lamath, Executive Session.
Move that the school committee adjourn it to Executive Session pursuant to MGL-C3A subsection S 21A7 to comply with Act under authority of general special law approval of executive session minutes for sessions held between March 15, '23, November 15, '23, and December 6, '23, and conduct a periodic review of nondisclosed minutes and not reconvene in open session.
So we have a motion to head into Executive Session. Any discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebes?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dout?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Thank you to the viewing audience for joining us. We will not be returning to open session. Have a good night.